Okay. Good, yeah. Then, I think we're ready to begin the continued public hearing for density determination 99 Concord Road. And Susan, maybe you can just walk us through what we have to do here so that we check all the boxes.
Yeah, there are a number of decisions you want to make. Having read the kind of shorter decision, it's not the special permit decision, it's the certificate of action approval conditions for three lot definitive. So the first thing you'll notice is a somewhat lengthy discussion on waivers and a listing of the waivers that you want to consider voting on. So once you've done that, if you haven't done it already, then you want to vote on the waivers.
Don't we vote on the waivers by approving this certificate of action?
Maybe you want to second vote on waivers.
We're talking about these nineteen waivers.
Yeah, and the narrative part.
And the narrative part, yeah.
All right, so let's read that first, and then we'll vote on the waivers and then
You have something where we talk about the plan minimizes all duration and damage to natural cultural features topography of the site by preserving the prominent ledge known along Concord Road and historic stone walls on Concord Road and Merriam Street. Now, that part of that historic stone wall is the layered granite curving, am I right? Which is ugly, has been for years. Is that part of the historic stone wall? Are you, they, it used to be, I, it used to be letters in the town crier about that, but some DPW person had a bunch of granite curving left over and they put it there. You guys have really never noticed it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember whether it's along this property line.
These people noticed it.
It is.
It is.
It's stacked in like cordwood.
It is the most ridiculous thing. It is not historic in the slightest unless we want to preserve major mistakes, probably as attributed to it, I don't know.
Can we ask for it to be removed?
But it's an interesting thing. I'm surprised you guys have never noticed it.
I noticed it. It's very, it's very separate, it's almost like someone hit it or something at one point or got remade or something. It's completely separate, different from each side.
From the whole entire rest of the wall?
Yeah. It's the same height.
So what do you suggest?
I, I don't know. I'm just like, the applicant is nodding his head, shaking his head.
Why don't you exclude that section that is not historic and looks like the kind of stone walls that you want to preserve? You don't have to maintain and preserve that if you want it cut in.
Right. So that could be, at any future date, someone could try to match the adjoining sides of the wall as opposed to having the stacked granite?
You could put that as a condition.
Well, is the stone, is that stone wall in the right of way?
I think it must be.
Yeah, it is.
Because only a DPW would have done something like that.
We're going to have to have a scenic road hearing.
Right.
Yeah, I suspect it was built when the sidewalk was.
Yeah, I know what it looks like, I just didn't know where it wasn't.
Do you want to type it?
Do you have a photo?
It looks like a guardrail.
Yeah, we could talk about that.
The scenic road.
In the scenic road hearing.
Yeah.
So why don't we just say, you know, the stone wall, the historic stone wall's, you know, subject to review by, under the, under a scenic road hearing or something like that.
It is a retaining wall.
It is a retaining, I know.
Yeah, that whole stone wall is a retaining wall.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's something stacked in granite curving.
No, I, I know, I know what it looks like. So I'm just trying to see how we word it so that we then can go move on.
How about stone walls within the scenic, within the right of, scenic right of way?
So you have that condition already. If you look to your special permit on specific to 99 Concord Road conditions, number two, lots one to three may be subject to Article 23 of General Law Laws of Improvements on the lots require removal of trees or stone wall in the public right of way.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Right, right, okay.
And there, I think this refers to the historic stone walls that are there.
Mm-hmm.
And there are, and there's, there's quite a link to the historic stone walls. So let's just leave that alone and deal with it as part of the scenic road.
Okay.
Work.
Okay. Fine, just so you're all aware of it, it's our chance to do something. Sorry, I'm taking a listen for you.
Okay. Anything, any other comments? No comments, then. Okay. In that case, somebody want to make a motion to accept the waivers, to grant the waivers?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Now, the next thing is, now we're reviewing the entire decision.
Reviewing the entire decision. For the definitive life, not the special permit.
Right.
I presented the original meeting. I wasn't.
What are you doing?
I just have one small thing. Page two, on the plans themselves, the first ones say one inch equals thirty feet and the rest of them say one foot equals thirty feet. I'm assuming all of them, one inch equals thirty feet, yeah.
Some of them say one foot, some of them say one inch.
Reading a little bit.
Yeah, wow, it's really done it to you.
Yeah.
That's a Steve comment.
It is.
It's beyond.
Boy, if that's all Roy finds, it's perfect, it's amazing.
Yeah, I hear your kind of thing.
Really, wow.
Okay, so is everybody done?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I move that we accept the certificate of action approval conditions for the three lot definitive flexible development subdivision at 99 Concord Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody want to move to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the continued public hearing for the flexible subdivision, 99 Concord Road. Anything we should look out for here, Susan?
Well, yes, I divided it up into specific conditions of approval for a particular subdivision. That's part A on page four. And I guess two, two questions, points that you might want to consider. We talked about driveway locations, I don't know if you want to refer to the plan, but at the end of your last hearing, I thought I heard Rob suggest that the driveway location be fixed on, from its junction with Concord and on Merriam Street up to 100 feet. And I scaled it off, I don't have my scale.
I got one.
I have a two for you.
Engineer or?
Yeah, engineer.
I got one, John?
Yes.
And I did two things that you may want to consider. So the first is, we don't have much play here on lot one, so I suggested that lot one's driveway stay the way it is. For lot two, because we have this whole area that's going to be saved, it's not, it's not that much moving on lot one without breaking into the LDA. For lot two, I think I said 180 feet.
You did.
Okay, as opposed to 100 feet, so 180 feet, thirty scale. Goes right up to the truck. Sort of here and just up there.
They have names down.
Okay.
And then this, did I say 100?
120.
Okay. So 120 feet down. And those, if we want to fix those during the site plan approval process, the applicant can.
Is that relevant?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other slight, strange thing, we talked about limited development area and Jack Dolley, the applicant, asked that, he's, he had said that there's a lot of stuff on the property there, snowplow lanes and boats and cars and want permission to take those off. And so I structured condition number nine to say, site plan approval required by the planning board, or the site work shall be done until site plan approval. However, the planning board in its discretion may allow for the removal of trucks, boats, cars, blah, 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 and demo of the existing house on lot three prior to site plan approval provided large construction fences been installed along the LDA and inspected by the planning board. So the suggestion is, kind of, and remove kind of all that stuff, but you don't want the LDA tampered with.
Well, except that you called out exactly what could be removed. You don't say, and like, it's trucks, boats, cars, snowplow blades, the end.
Those are covered.
Is that all, or were you expecting to find other things, you know, like?
There's probably about nine snowplow blades out there. There's a tractor, there's two boats, a shed and a house.
Okay, well, the tractor hasn't been called out. I'm just, I'm just pointing out that we've called it out so specifically.
You could say such as.
Yes, and, and like debris.
Yeah, debris.
May allow for the, blah, 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 so.
Vehicles and.
Yeah, and like.
Vehicles.
Debris, it's debris.
Well, when you say debris, I get a little nervous, but sometimes debris, my, debris to some people may be.
It's pretty big, yeah.
Okay, all right.
The excuse to law, you know, so you're talking about kind of man-made things.
Okay.
So, what is debris as another inch law?
Anything that is the law or natural feature. Oh, we really get down to weeds, don't we?
Other than that, you know, those are your specific conditions and they're.
Could you show us the LDA?
The LDA for lot one.
It's this, not it on?
Yeah, it goes like that, goes over.
It's this, right?
Yeah.
Yes, but that, but it also.
That's the setback line. In this case, that's the setback line.
Yeah, but this is the LDA. Yeah, this is the orange fence, in other words.
Yes, yes, the orange fence.
So sometimes it is right on the setback line.
They, they might be on some, well, certainly over here, they wouldn't be on that.
Yeah.
So it goes then, but that, and then this lot's about the same, so it's this lot.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Susan?
Yeah, there's one typo, under the general conditions, old habits die hard, I called it a lotting plan under number eight, and that should say, instead of prior release of lotting plan, prior release of the flexible development plan.
Okay. So, I'm not going to be able to sign these tonight, because they're not going to be corrected. All right. So I can sign them tomorrow night.
I won't be in tomorrow, so.
But you'll be at a meeting tomorrow night.
Yes, but I won't be in to use the computer.
We can fix that tomorrow if you will.
If I call into you, you can grab the computer for you.
Yeah. Okay. Assuming we talk through. I'd support the question, you're honored to give this. You have no idea.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Did it again, Susan? One inch equals thirty feet.
Susan, on page five, you have two.
Yeah.
On page five, you have two.
It's a replacement for both cases, in six and eight. See, you're still on it?
I was just wondering about, do we need to include the old driveway being removed under section nine of page five? I mean, does that get pulled up too, and will that be bone of contention?
No. As part of?
As part of the, it is discretionary law for the removal of trucks, boats, cars, snowplow blades.
I would wait till site plan approval on that.
Yeah, for sure. That's not debris.
All right, so the old, but you can remove the house, but not the driveway?
Up to you all. Your question is for the house.
Just for the house, all right. You might use the driveway.
Might. I'll just leave it in there.
All right, okay.
Good. Motion, anybody?
Steve? I see red ink, I wondered if you had.
Oh, no, that's.
He's, he's moved on.
But I will, so I'd like to move that we approve the certificate of action for a special permit with conditions and with the revisions noted for a three lot flexible development subdivision at 99 Concord Road.
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just wrap it up, we'll pass it in after the changes are made and you'll. So just wrap it up, roll pass in after the changes are made and you'll sign it, although it needs the board signature?
Oh, that's right.
What time, what time in the meeting?
Oh, that's right. Got to get all, we have to get the four members together somehow.
Right.
I printed it if you want to get it, I'm sorry.
Oh, have you, have you made all the corrections?
Just the two, one, the lodging.
Oh, no, there's others as well.
And then the one, the one.
Just the one inch.
One inch equals thirty.
One inch equals, there was the, I don't know what it said.
And there was the, all of the modification on the, on the debris language.
Add, and the like, or more specific to sheds?
Well, so you have trucks, boats, cars, snowplow blades, what else do you think? Was there a trailer?
No. It's a shed.
Tractor.
Tractor, yeah.
It's that green tractor next to the house.
Green tractor.
Equipment and apparatus such as. I guess is one way to put it.
May allow for the removal of apparatus such as.
Okay.
Such as is good.
And then there were two changes on condition six and eight, where I put lodging plan, I should say flexible development plan under the general conditions.
And the inch, the.
The number two.
Plan equals whatever.
Change the feet to inches.
That's just for the second decision, not?
No, both.
No, both.
Yeah. So after you vote and sign it, what will happen is it will be filed at the town court, there's a 20-day appeal period. I'll have an agreement ready for you to review and sign, because with all subdivisions, you have a covenant or agreement. This one will be simple, because most of the covenants give the surety for construction of a road, that obviously won't happen here. This agreement between developer and the planning board has really got all these conditions that we met. Prior to endorsement of the lodging plan that gets done, and then you'll endorse, I'll probably plan the flexible development plan, deeds need to be written, which shows the LDA in perpetuity, and all that gets filed.
Okay, after the 20-day appeal period?
Yes.
Okay. Right, okay. You got to make the, print the changes out, John?
Yes.
All right. In that case, soon as John brings them down here, I'd say at the end of the meeting, we'll sign the, the two decisions and we're off to the races.
And files it with the clerk, me, or?
We will. Yeah. So, we're good. If you want to shift this towards the signing, it's not what the saw talks.
Don't keep out the pens though.
Special pens.
Don't keep out the pens though.
My obligation to keep with sellers is close 45 days after expiration of the appeal. The other stuff, or the covenants, what will happen, prior, if they land, prior to the 45? Yeah, prior to the 45, but after the 20?
Yes.
Tough to think, real tough to think, but, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm sure.
Do you want a copy of each?
Yeah. Apparently, that's what I've got to pull over here. Yeah, one copy, John. You're making the prints, right, John? You're going to, you're going to make the copies?
Yeah, I'm going to do that. The, the two changes, you're not going to make a plan on, I mean, the decision, no?
Yeah, yeah, you need to print those out and bring it down, sign it at the end of the meeting. Thank you. What happened to Steve?
He can blow us down.
Steve? Are you going to Joyce for the next hearing, or?